All right. Ray Bev? Go ahead. All right, call the regular scheduled Council meeting to order, please. Please rise for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, I guess by me tonight. All right. Dear God, thank you for giving us an amazing community to call home and to live and work and play and learn. Thank you for tremendous volunteers that we lifted up just this past week, over 700, that dedicate themselves directly to town efforts to keep our town beautiful. Thank you to tremendous staff. Thank you to tremendous citizens and a great council that fosters teamwork and collaboration and are great shepherds of the town's limited resources. And thank you for our future that looks tremendous and thank you for all the blessings you bring upon our community. Amen. Roll call, please.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Here.
Councilmember Cantino.
Aye.
Councilmember LaGee.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Chair.
Councilmember Hanson.
Chair.
Councilmember Elke.
Chair.
Vice Mayor Dickie.
Yes.
Excellent, welcome, everybody. Move right into a couple of proclamations we get to read and take in tonight. The first one is regarding the Holocaust and our remembrance. Town of Fountain Hills proclamation, whereas the Holocaust was a state-sponsored systematic persecution and annihilation of European Jewry by Nazi Germany and its collaborators from 1933 to 1945, and whereas during the Holocaust, six million people were murdered and millions more suffered grievous oppression under death and death under Nazi tyranny, and whereas the history of the Holocaust offers an opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities and individual society and governments, and whereas we should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny, and should actively rededicate ourselves to the principles of individual freedom and a just society, and whereas pursuant to the Act of Congress, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council has designated days of remembrance to remember the victims of the Holocaust as well as reflect on the needs and respect of all people. This April 15th through 22nd, 2012 will be days of remembrance in the Town of Fountain Hills in memory of the victims of the Holocaust and in honor of the survivors as well as the rescuers, liberators, and to do further proclaim that we as citizens of Fountain Hills should work to promote human dignity and confront hate whenever and wherever it occurs. Our second proclamation is regarding child abuse, prevention, of course, and the Town of Fountain Hills, whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community problem that depends on the involvement among people throughout the community, and whereas child maltreatment occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and do not know how to cope, whereas the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community, and whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure each family has the support they need to raise their children in a healthy environment, and whereas child abuse and neglect not only directly harm children but also increase the likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, health problems, and risky behavior, whereas all citizens should become involved in supporting families in the raising of their children in safe nurturing environments, and whereas all citizens should be supportive of child abuse prevention programs in their community. Now therefore, our IGT Schlumpf do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the Town of Fountain Hills and call upon all citizens to do their part in preventing child abuse and strengthening the community in which we live. Now go to call to the public. Do we have a couple speakers?
Yes, may we have three cards. Bruce Hanson, followed by Alice Brovan, and then Linda Bordeaux.
All right, thank you. Welcome, Bruce.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I'm Bruce Hanson. I live on Sunburst Drive. I'm also the chairman of the Fountain Hills Sanitary District Board of Directors, and that's really what I want to talk to you about tonight. The district supplies water, irrigation water, for three golf courses and three parks in town. For the first time in, first time ever, we are not going to have enough water for everybody this summer. Some people are going to do with less or do without. Now, we're trying to take steps to mitigate it as much as we can, and there's one that we can do, but we have approached the town about rectifying this. At the wash in back of Morningside, that discharges about 30,000 gallons of water a day. There used to be a pump back station in that that pumped that water back up into the lake a number of years ago. About seven years ago, that pump back station quit working and the town chose not to fix it. Well, seven years ago, we didn't really care, I guess, but now we care. We need that 30,000 gallons of water a day. That's almost a million gallons a month. So the district approached town staff about two months ago, saying, "We'll pay for it. We'll do it. We'll pick up all the expense. We just need to do it." We are still trying to get town permission to do this. Every week, every month that we delay, we've lost that much water. It won't solve our problem, but it'll help. It's almost enough water to water Desert Vista Park. So what I would ask you to do, I would ask the council to put this on your next agenda and give us the approval. We're not asking you for any money. We'll pick up all the, all the expense. It won't cost you a dime. We'll do everything. All we need for you to do is say, "Yeah, it's okay with us if you do that." So if you would help us with that, it would help everybody, and I'd really appreciate it. Thanks. Thank you.
Alice Brovan?
Thank you. I'm Alice Brovan. I appreciate the opportunity to tell you about a situation that affects probably a lot of people in our community, people who would like very much to use our library, but believe it or not, the distance from the parking lot to the door is very lengthy for a lot of people, and it keeps people, including my husband, from using the library, which is really too bad because he loves the library. My wish is that there could be a way that we make an access to that door so that people can use the library. I know that there are problems around with walking, et cetera, around that, but I think that I would urge you to see if you could look into it and find a way to make it possible for people to be dropped off right at the door. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Brovan.
Linda Bordeaux?
Hey, Ms. Bordeaux.
Hi, greetings, everyone. I'm Linda Bordeaux, and I'm here tonight. Last time we met, it was the budget session, and I had mentioned about the survey that was 30,000 plus an additional 5,000 to add the bond issue, and I had reported to you that I'd be happy to dig down into it and give you some findings, which I do not have tonight, which is why I came here. I just wanted to give you kind of an update. I should have them by next week. But based on what I've seen so far, the, just to refresh your memory, the figures that I had gotten was to do like a robo-call style with multiple questions, I'm sorry, 10 questions with multiple choice answers to canvass 15,000 of our citizens, and that figure was $7,000 that I had gotten, like a broad brush stroke of an estimate. When I looked up the Funding Solutions Survey, which was done in 2007 from the town, that was the last survey that we were sort of basing this against, I think I have some great news for everyone. That survey only covered 400 residents. The cost of that survey was $15,620, and it was done all by phone. There's even a copy of the phone script and the questions and how the stats were broken down, great pictures. They gave you pie charts and various different forms of, of information. So I think I'm going to be able to come up with a way for the town to save thousands and thousands of dollars, which you can put forward towards something else. I know we've got a lot of stuff going on, so I just want to give you an update, and I know by the next council meeting, I should be able to give you, I'm hoping, two proposals all done and ready for you guys to select from. So maybe we'll free up, you know, 25,000 or 30,000 to put someplace else. So that's all. I just wanted to give you an update.
Thanks, Ms. Brovan.
Thank you.
Now, is it for call to the public?
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks. All right, move on to the consent agenda items. Items one and two, consideration of approving town council meeting minutes from March 12 and 15, 2012, and consideration of authorizing payment to Mayor Copa County Elections Department in accordance with the intergovernmental agreement for direct support, Town of Fountain Hills, March 13, 2012, primary special recall and special recall election in the amount of $34,011.16. Could I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cantino.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember LaGee.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dickie.
Aye.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Elke.
Aye.
Mayor Seven Zero.
All right, thank you very much. Move on to the regular agenda. Item three, consideration request for public art from the Public Art Committee to accept a donated sculpture titled Starburst for public display. How are you, Mark?
Fine, sir. Mayor Schlumpf and members of the council, I am pleased to be able to bring forward to your consideration an additional piece of public art, and if you bear with me for just a second here. The piece, as I indicated in my staff report, is titled Sunburst. It is a little unusual in the sense that it is a stainless steel sculpture. It's also a little unusual that the fact that it's 16 feet tall. So it's very unusual in a number of respects. It has a value of $6,500 and was done by artist Jim LaPaso, as depicted here. That's a picture of the piece. It gives you some sense of what it looks like, as well as the height of the particular piece, so as I said, it's a little unusual. There's an annual insurance cost associated with the piece based on the value at 43 cents per hundred, so a cost of $27.95 on an annual basis to insure the piece, and staff is recommending acceptance and placement of the piece as proposed, and there's a site map there to show you that the piece would be placed in the Centennial Circle. So with that, Mr. Miles also joins me this evening, in case there are questions that you have of either myself or he.
All right, good, thank you, Mark. Anyone from the public on this item?
No, sir.
All right, Mayor Miles, if I could ask you a question about the Starburst piece?
That's your answer.
And so the location looks like, is that by that other piece with the birds flying?
Fairly so, Mark, fairly close, yeah.
Okay. Is that why we are looking to place in that area, or what did the committee think of as far as that location?
Candidly, we're running out of places until we come in with a lot more places for you, which we hope to do sometime this summer, but it looked like a very good location, and it will provide a little bit of synergy between the two pieces. So when we looked at that, thought that might be a very good piece.
Is that in the, in the dirt within the circle? Or is it outside the circle?
It will be within the dirt within the circle. There are six sites within the circle that have been approved, and this will take up one of those.
Okay.
And we have one more that you approved not too long ago that will go very near the community center. That will leave us two more, and those will be gone before you can blink.
Okay. Good, council, any questions or comments on this piece? Councilmember Elke?
Mr. Miles, any history or story behind this particular piece of art?
We have a donor who, we are in a remarkable position that we've, I've been hoping for years. All of a sudden, we're having a lot of people call us and say that they'd like to give money to buy a piece of art. We have four of those on the agenda right now. Two of them, we haven't found the art for yet. This is the second one of the two. But we keep a wish book of pieces, and for quite some time, we have been looking for a good mobile. We want to get one that's tall enough so that people aren't going to be going up and hitting it, running around. And this is a very strong one, very wind, wind resistant. The comparable piece has been placed in a number of windy cities around the country, and we were told that anything short of a very heavy crosswind, it will withstand very, very high wind. So as I say, we've been looking for a mobile for quite some time. When we found a donor and she started going through our, what we call our wish book, she picked out and said, "We want that one." We called the artist. He named a price. I named another price, and we agreed on my price, and so she is ready to give us the money just as soon as you tell us that we can put it in.
Thank you. Again, please pass on our thanks to the Fountain Hills Civic and Cultural Association and Sandy, the chair, for bringing in some good dollars and further bolstering the public art here in Fountain Hills.
They're just going to keep coming.
Yeah. So this piece doesn't move with the wind? It's a mobile?
It will move with the wind, yes.
It does move, okay.
If you notice, I guess you can't see. You can see the cups up there. They're designed to catch the wind and move with the wind.
Okay. Wow, all right. Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, did I already get a motion? No, I didn't get a motion. Did you get a motion?
Sure, Mayor, if I may.
Yep.
Motion to accept a donated sculpture titled Starburst and placing it on the public display.
Second. All right, any other discussion? Anything else, Mark?
Nothing.
All right, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor Seven Zero.
All right, thank you. Item number four, consideration of resolution 2012-09, amending Exhibit E of the Development Agreement between Town of Fountain Hills and Avenue of the Fountain LLC, Case DA 2011-02. Bob, how are you?
Good, thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. This is a request by Dave Fackler and George Koznoff, the potential developers of the Avenue Commercial Downtown Theater Project, for an amendment of Exhibit E of the existing development agreement. Exhibit E is the schedule of performance, which is attached to the development agreement, and it outlines the basic timelines for certain tasks to be completed by the developer. The current schedule requires that property acquisition occur within 60 days of the date of the agreement. The date of the agreement was February 2nd. 60 days out would be April 9th, which is next Monday. Due to financing glitches, property acquisition will most likely not occur for another 30 to 45 days. The applicants have requested that the 60-day timeline be moved out to six months, which will move the date to approximately August 28. The planned submission date is also requested to be moved out from three months to eight months, and the start of construction date is requested to be moved out from six months to 10 months. The other subsequent dates have not been proposed to be changed. Staff recommends approving the amendment to Schedule E as outlined in the staff report, and the applicants are present if you have questions. Thank you.
All right, good, thanks, Bob. Anyone from the public on this item?
Mr. Fackler.
Mr. Fackler, you want to go ahead and probably have questions for you also.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name's Dave Fackler. My residence is 224 East Vrentrup Drive in Tempe, Arizona. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I really want to thank you for your consideration of the amendment of the agreement. As I've stated in my letter to the council, we've been going through some torturous outside interference, it seems like at times, in order to put this financing together. We are very close. Escrow papers are in their finalization now, and we had hoped to be standing here before you with an open escrow, but it looks as though it will be early next week before all the technical language can be finalized in that agreement. With me this evening is John Willis, who is our broker, working with Kennedy Trust on the bond financing, as well as my partner, George Koznoff, here, who has been also working on a day-to-day basis with the trust in order to move things forward. Also here this evening is representative from AP, our contractor, who is also the equity investor in this project and is standing ready with $2 million to open this escrow as soon as the paperwork can get worked out between the bond attorney for the, for the trust, as well as AP's attorneys as well. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, or any of the individuals I just spoke about could, could also answer those questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fackler. Anyone else from call of public?
Yes, sir.
All right, council, any questions? Who's got some questions? Councilmember Elke?
Thank you. But it was just one question, and maybe I can direct this to Andrew. Andrew, Bob had said that it'd be about August 28th. Is that agreement, is it August 3rd is the date that we're talking about extending it out to? I just wanted to be clear on that.
The extension is six months from the effective date, which was February 2nd, so.
So we're looking at about August 3rd is about the date. Okay, may I ask a question of Mr. Fackler?
Mr. Fackler.
Mr. Fackler, is it safe to say that we'll have everything done well before, certainly before August 3rd?
The information that we are getting from the trust's attorneys and representatives is that as soon as the escrow is open, like I say, hopefully early next week, that they feel they could close it as early as 30 days from there, but of course, when you ask to nail them down, they say 60 to 90 days is our standard. But everything has been approved. They've been working on the due diligence for some four months now, so they are way ahead of the game towards closing this, so. Right now, they're saying it could close as, as early as 30 days after the opening of that escrow. We have negotiated a new purchase contract with the owner of the property. We will place that property in escrow as soon as we get the loan closed, and should be able to close within 30 to 60 days on that after the loan. So figure that we are 60 to 90 days out from now at the best-case scenario, but again, not everything's been working best-case here lately, so that's the reason we pushed it out to August, is to make sure that everything is there, and we aren't standing here again in front of you, you know, 30, 40 days from now, asking for another extension because we are this close. We've been pushing on this for a long time. Everybody's really weary. There's a lot at stake. The attorneys just have to get comfortable with each other's languages, and that's really what's been going on for the last week or two, is, is back and forth between the attorneys of the various parties to get comfortable with the language on, on the critical issues that are in front of them, so. Best I can give you right now. Okay, thank you.
And any other questions regarding the extension of the development agreement? Councilmember Hanson?
And maybe Andrew can answer this. How will this affect the, the timing on the traffic study?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, we, all of the requirements that were still, were in place for all those other items are still there, so the moving forward beyond acquisition is still under the same constraint. Those things have to happen prior to the point that they, they move forward. So we're, it's just advancing all that into a future month, but none of those will have changed. There's still requirements prior to the next steps.
Okay, I guess I just, I was a little surprised when we did get this because I was under the assumption when it was approved that we, there was a, it was kind of a lot of pressure to, to do it right then, simply because it would put the financing in jeopardy if it didn't happen that night. So I was just, I was just kind of taken aback when we were looking at another extension again.
Mr. Fackler, anyone want to expand on that?
Only to apologize. We were in that same boat with you. We were getting pressure to move it forward, get everything in place so that the loan could close quickly. Again, we were working with a, as was the trust, working with a third party. There were actually six projects, ours being one of those six, that were bundled together into a $300 million loan. The third party who was funding the escrow for that, roughly $30 million, did not put up the money at the last minute, and all of those projects essentially were in that same boat. Now luckily for us, our contractor, AP, stepped in, said that they would put up the 10% if the trust would split off our project from the others. It took a while for the trust to consider that, but they came back so that they would do that. We had hoped to have been closing the loan in, actually, March 3rd was our target date for closing the loan, but once that third party fell apart, we had to put everything back together, and that's where we're at right now. Like I say, I apologize for the delays. I apologize for pushing the town so hard. We were pushing ourselves hard at the same time, so I really did not look forward to putting you in that boat, and I'm standing here with a little egg on my face and apologizing to you and, and saying that we are still working hard to make the project work, and we hope to be underway quickly.
Anyone else, council? And it sounds like the, if we progress with this, what would groundbreaking date roughly be? That's the question I get from most of the people around town. Obviously, they're extremely excited about movie theater, and obviously, folks in the public aren't familiar with what the Avenue's project is. We're talking about this development agreement. It is the movie theater and retail and Phase Two, some offices and retail, but when would the ground be breaking? When do you see that happening?
I would see that happening the first or second week in July.
Okay, so still this summer? Okay. And then how much time for construction?
We're saying 12 months right now. You know, AP says that they can put the shell up quicker than that, but of course, we still had all the tenant improvements, everything else, so right now, we are, are still holding it 12 months.
Okay. And then soon escrow will open, and that's just the agreements that attorneys are working out the language?
That's correct. Escrow open early next week, hopefully closing 30 days thereafter, so.
Okay. So this gives you a little room cushion there, as you said, so you're not having to come back again?
That's correct. We sat down with city staff and the city manager and, and just felt, you know, we are not in control of, of the close of this. The trust is saying 60 to 90 days, so let's go with 60 to 90 days being the worst-case scenario. That's how we came up with the dates.
Okay, so what we're adding here, and maybe it's Andrew, is going to six months, but it's an extra how many, is it an extra three months from what we have, or six, four months from what we have? So it's going out from April 9th to roughly the August 3rd date? Okay. And that, on that August 3rd date, what does that, what's that requirement? That they're closed, that they're taking out a permit? That August 3rd date, what would it constitute?
The, the August date is acquisition, followed after that by the construction plans for Phase One, followed by commencement of constructions, and that's six months, eight months, 10 months from the effective date, which is beginning of February.
All right. Is there anyone else from your team or associates that wish to share anything for us to consider this? Mr. Koznoff? How are you doing?
I'm doing good. How are you folks doing?
Very good.
Let me put a little clarification on the time, why it's, why it's taken so long to get to this point. I've been mostly involved with the financing with Adolphson Peterson, our contractor, and the Kennedy Trust. Originally, we were doing bond trades, and the funds that were going into the, the escrow account would be traded out for bonds. The Kennedy Trust came back and offered a nicer position if we did a cash position. Well, that changed everything in all the paperwork, all the escrow agreements, everything that we had already completed and agreed to. So then we had to go back to square one. With us tonight is Quinn Gormley from Adolphson Peterson, who has been working today on the changes needed to satisfy Adolphson Peterson and to satisfy the Kennedy Trust. That's the only issue that's at stake right now, is just the language on how do we satisfy and make sure that the funds are safe in the transfer. The Kennedy Trust has talked to the town and acknowledged that we have been approved for the loan, that there are no issues there. We've been through our due diligence. It's just the language right now in the escrow, and you know how attorneys are, when they get that in their hands, it just seems to take forever. So that's where we're at right now. Hopefully, we'll have that agreement penciled out here in the next couple of days.
Excellent, all right. Anyone else from your team or folks? Anything else? Any questions for Mr. Koznoff? Councilmember Elke?
Thank you. Mr. Koznoff, I appreciate the work that you're putting into this, and, you know, obviously, with anything, there's unexpected delays, and attorneys always have a way of fouling things up when they get in the middle of everything, so. I'm just encouraging you to make this happen, and, you know, we've got a lot of time, effort, and energies put into this, and I know everybody in town's anxious to be able to see a movie here in town and, and look forward to it.
Trust me, we're not stopping. We're going to continue on this, and I want to thank the new town manager for getting in there and make this a proactive situation and bringing this forward to the council so we do have the time and we don't have the pressures. Oh, and the other thing that I wanted to bring up is I did meet with Sam and Joni Gamercotta, and the contract will go into place when we go into escrow, not at close, like my partner had explained. I've worked it out. partner had explained. I've worked it out. We've worked out the price. We've worked out the terms. So the day that we open escrow, we will go into contract with Sam at that point, place the earnest money up, and go to close from there. So that part of it, which I know, Tate, you had some questions on it, one of the meetings, has been worked out and resolved.
Very good. Thank you very much. Councilmember Legay, any questions?
No, I'm fine.
All right, thank you. All right, can we get a motion on this item?
Mayor?
Councilmember Elke?
Motion to approve resolution two thousand and twelve dash nine, amending Exhibit E of the development agreement for the avenue relating to the schedule of performance for the proposed development on property located at sixteen, seven-twenty-five East Verdi River Drive.
All right, do we have a second? All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor in the cap saying aye? Aye, opposed?
Mayor Seven Zero?
Thank you. Thank you. Wish you the best. Keep us up to date. Let us know.
We will.
All right, next item's legislative update. Related items included in the League of Arizona Season Towns Weekly Legislative Bulletin eleven and twelve. All right, Ken, you're up. Legislative bulletin, or are we throwing it over to Andrew? Andrew, looks like you've got the right surprise look, so put him on the spot.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in your packet are legislative bulletins eleven and twelve. This item is intended for you all to be able to discuss any of the items in there. Those have come out over the past two weeks, in March twenty-third and thirtieth editions. As you'll see, a number of municipally-related bills are still on their way through the legislature, so we're more than happy to take whatever direction you all have.
All right, can anything apart from the ongoing consolidation of elections?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes. We've, per the direction of the council, actively sent our opposition on behalf of the mayor and council, Town Fountain Hills, to all the voting members that was affected by this from Monday. For the consolidated, they voted it down, but it was brought back with an amendment and could be considered, I think, by the Senate president. Could come back Monday for reconsideration, so we're going to try to stay on top of that. If it does come back, well, then we'll advocate opposition to it again.
All right. Quinn, do we know why some other municipalities are for this, or do we understand why? I mean, those larger ones are already on this kind of schedule, right? They wouldn't have to change schedules. Okay. Councilmember Dickey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. That's what I was going to say. I don't know. I think Scottsdale's already on that schedule, right? So I'm not sure why they're weighing in.
I also think that it was also the county elections folks that pretty much have not given a lot of opposition to it either. I know that they, someone made a comment, I think, on the floor that talked about there was no opposition from the county election directors, at least when one of them quoted their election director, which I'm assuming was the Maricopa County elections. So it probably had a lot to do with them giving the consideration.
All right. Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, the only other thing I wanted to mention is, again, twelve-eighty-eight, the ADWR bill, because it was unanimous through the House, unanimous through, I mean, unanimous through the Senate, unanimous in committee in the House. Should have been put on rules by now, I think. So might be something we need to have some attention on. The Rules Committee that came out for Monday does not have it on it. So I don't know if we want to have a renewed or any other, more of a vigorous support to that bill.
Again, the mayor and council directed staff to advocate opposition against, with that one, too.
In favor.
In favor, and I'm sorry. Excuse me. And we'll continue to do that and keep watch on it.
Mayor, I might suggest that the, I think it's Jerry Wires, Representative Wires is the chair of Rules, so if we wanted to target it a little bit, ask him to put it on the agenda, that would be one way to go, because that is the next step, and that we can't do anything until we get it on rules.
Other council members, thoughts on these two updates from the League? All right. Thank you very much, Andrew and Ken, on that, and next item. Council Discussion Direction Town Manager, Ken Buchanan, nothing on that item, and item seven?
Mr. Mayor, I know that there was a request from the chairman of the sanitary board.
Yes.
I had met with the manager, district manager. We were going to work toward that. I might have been under, could have been my fault on that for misinterpreting that to advocate, because we know we wanted to get that on the front burner, to try to get that pump-back system going. So we'll work on that. I'll crank that up Monday.
Good. I was going to bring that up on the next one, next item. The, yeah, you and I have talked about that. You gave me an update, so it sounds like that's something to give some attention to, and perhaps if it needs to come before council, I'm not sure, but if it needs to, perhaps. Yeah, and then the other item was that library, you know. I don't know if the back door is a way to get people access to the library, but something I think it's worth spending some time on for staff to help make sure accessibility of the libraries is enhanced, if it can be.
If you could see a couple of wheelchairs available in the library, they could think of.
That's true. Yeah, I was thinking this.
Because the back doors go into the employee area.
Does it? Okay. Good, well, that's worth looking into.
Senior services.
Yeah, that'd be a good short-term thing if there's nothing else. All right, any other updates or reports on recent activity? Mr. Buchanan?
No, sir.
Council vice mayor Dickey?
Mayor, I might want to mention that we're having a fine ordinance meeting on April eleventh from six to eight, I think, at the community center.
Good. April eleventh, six to eight. And then we have our work study on the budget next Tuesday, five-thirty. So perhaps Ms. Bordeaux will have her data for it as well. Councilmember Elke?
And I saw in the towns, in our weekly report, that VFW donated twenty-five hundred dollars towards the repair of the memorial, so I just wanted to express appreciation for that.
Terrific. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, VFW. All right, next item, look for motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In a second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you.